It's 5:00 PM and I call the special meeting of the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Matthews, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Culp?
Here.
Mr. Posey?
Yeah.
Mr. Morris? Should I call the staff names or just check them out? Okay, that's fine.
We're now, I now motion to adjourn into an executive session for conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action in accordance with ORC 121.22. When the executive session is over, we will return to regular second, we will actually go into a work session. I now motion to return to regular se-
I second your motion to go into executive session.
Thank you.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
We do have a work session tonight and I motion, no, I'm not going to motion to enter into the work session, but we're going into the executive session, then we'll be in a work session, then we'll return to the meeting here. It's 6:00 PM and I call this meeting of the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Matthews, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Culp?
Here.
Mr. Posey?
Here.
Chief Stegelmeyer, will you please proceed with the reading casualties?
Good evening, Board. The following is the first responder casualty list for the period of August the 8th through August the 20th of 2024. Patrolman Troy Floyd from the Summit Police Department in Mississippi, end of watch August the 8th, 2024. Deputy Sheriff Hunter Reedy from the Smythe County Sheriff's Office of Virginia, end of watch August 9th, 2024. And Sergeant Billy Randolph from the Fort Worth Police Department in Texas, end of watch August 12th, 2024.
Please join me in a moment of silence for these first responders. Thank you. There are no special guests or presentations tonight on the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Schweickert, you have Resolution 68, 2024, and 69, 2024.
Yeah, good evening, Board. I'll try and be as clear as possible, trying to recover from a little cold over the past weekend, but Resolution 068, 2024 is a resolution to authorize the township administrator to execute a grant agreement. November of last year, we were notified by the Ohio House Representative Tom Young, serving our district, that there would be project submissions available for capital budgeting through the Ohio House Bill 2. We did submit a project. We felt it was a good project for our community. It was to replace a couple of outstanding leaf machines so we can improve our service for our residents. We were awarded $250,000 to replace two machines. These two machines, one is a 1972 and one is a 1982, so 40 and 50 years respectively. When they were first came to the township, they were four cylinder motors. As time went on, they were upfitted to six cylinder gas and then eventually diesel, so a lot of longevity, a lot of man-hours, and a lot of welding took place to keep these operational. So anyways, these two new machines that we're looking at with these funds will, they have advanced hydraulics and they have different application features to mitigate dust, which both help our workers and our residents, but I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this grant agreement for this resolution.
Any questions?
Thank you. And then Resolution 069, 2024, again, is another resolution to authorize township administrator to execute a grant agreement. In January, we submitted a project to the Ohio EPA for the H2 Ohio Rivers Initiative Chloride Reduction Grant. We have an application that has been, it was kind of homemade with a tank and PVC to put down our brine system in our community as basically a de-icing agent before winter storms. This project request was for $33,108 for a new and improved LAS system. Gives us better precise, more precise controls when putting the application on the roadway and try and mitigate our brine usage and still have an effective radius when it comes to inclement weather. Be happy to answer any questions regarding this grant agreement as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carlson, you have Resolution 70, 2024.
Good evening, Board. What I have before you tonight is not a grant agreement, but a grant application. Community Development Department has been working in Public Works to prepare an application for the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Nature Works Program. Nature Works is a grant application that's generally pretty wide open. They fund a pretty wide array of parks and nature improvements. Working through the Parks and Trails Plan, one of the high priority projects that was identified was replacement of the playground at Miami View Park. The playground there is one of the oldest in our retinue of playgrounds and has been identified as a high-risk project by our park supervisor Rex Gore due to the proximity of the existing playground to the pond. Again, generally today, we would not put that there. It's been identified by many folks who go there as, hey, that's way too close. All it takes is a wandering toddler and they're in the pond. So again, this project was identified as a high priority and was determined by staff to score very well in the ODNR Nature Works Program. It is a reimbursement program, so working with the Finance Department, we have identified funds that could be used to finance the project upfront with the opportunity to be reimbursed up to potentially $122,000 toward this project. So again, it's a rare opportunity for playground equipment that something like this comes around. So with this resolution, the township administrator, Chris Snyder, would be permitted to sign and submit the application and affirm that funds would be available should we be chosen as a grant awardee. Again, we've worked with Finance Department to determine what would need to happen to be prepared for that. But if there's any questions, I will quickly show you. We worked with Pinchura through a state bid to get an idea of what the equipment could or would look like. Working with them, Public Works Director Schweickert identified there has to be a sidewalk that separates the playground, connects it to the parking lot, and separates it from the swing set. And Miami View Park being a large fishing pond that it is, identified a fish pattern for that parking lot. So again, trying to find some fun ways to be creative about our branding. And then there is a map showing where the playground would be located, again, much closer to the parking lot, so for ADA compliance and general accessibility. It's in a great spot there. Due to the grading, it also is much easier to get to the shelter and restrooms. So all in, a much better location to get newer equipment that is safer and meets modern standards. So again, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to discuss.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Mr. McCord, you have Resolution 71, 2024.
Yes, good evening, Board. Resolution 071, 2024 is an amended appropriations request specifically to the projects that Mr. Carlson just discussed, as well as the expanded community paving that was conducted earlier this summer. Highlighted the dollar amounts and we're doing this being very specific because these are, we're leveraging the federal American Rescue Plan dollars that we received in 2021. So be happy to answer any questions, although they've got all the fancy stuff. I just have the numbers, so.
So I make a motion to amend the agenda for the August 20th, 2024 Board of Trustees meeting to add the following resolutions for consideration. Number 72, 2024, a resolution to enter into a tolling agreement. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, now's the period for public comments. This is the portion of the meeting when Miami Township residents are invited to share their thoughts with the board. Your comments are valued and are taken and are taken into careful consideration. The board will not engage in dialogue at this time. Presentations are limited to five minutes each. Mr. Matthews, do we have any guests that would like to speak?
Yes, Mr. Culp. We have Kim Salber, Peacock Lane. Would you like to come up?
Come on up to the mic. State your name and address. Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name's Kim Sarber and I live on 10269 Peacock Lane. And my desire to express comment is just, I think, on behalf of the Cranes Run community about the proposed Dollar General store and the concern that it brings to our community. There is multiple concerns, but mainly being safety. That area is right in front of a bike path. The increase of traffic, that will come as a result of that store, and how Dollar General is perceived to attract clientele that is not necessarily people that we want around our neighborhood and around our children. It's really not needed in the Miami Township area. We have plenty of other alternatives, and I just don't think it's of the, it's a benefit to our community and it won't serve our community members well to have another store of that sort when there's other options so close in proximity. So I hope you'll take that into consideration, especially considering the number of people that will be impacted in that neighborhood, and it's right in our backyards as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes. I have.
Linda Bird?
No, we've got a volunteer here, so. Go ahead.
That's okay.
You're fine. Good name and address?
My name is Paul Thompson.
Okay.
I live at 4358 Kiwi Court in Cranes Run. I am also strongly in opposition to the location, the putting in of a Dollar General marketplace. Dollar stores tend to be in areas that are underserved. They tend to draw a population or a clientele that that may not really care about the area. It's really not the image I want to project for my neighborhood. I have a concern that that the marketplace aspect of this particular establishment may be a little bit of a bait and switch. I don't know if there's any provision to make sure that it maintains, if it ends up being approved and implemented, some floor space percentage of groceries, or if that's a dollar inventory. Yeah, I'm not sure how that would be monitored or enforced. I have a concern that it might tend to become more of a beer cave. I don't know if it could get a liquor license or those sorts of things. I just kind of see it as almost an entering wedge kind of a concept, and that's another concern that I have. As was mentioned, the foot and bicycle and running traffic that would go right in front of that establishment. I've witnessed, my wife has witnessed, a number of very near misses in the intersection of Byers Wood Road and Austin Landing, Miami'sburg, Springbrough, whatever the official names of the four roads that kind of intersect in that one spot. Driving over this evening, somebody pulled out and skipped the light and very nearly caught me. And as I made the left turn after yellow, then somebody pulling out of what would be the driveway of that Dollar General or the shared driveway with Speedway, again, was, you know, popped into the lane that I was occupying. Didn't have to slam on the brakes, but it's just kind of an illustration of the potential for disaster. I do believe there was a child hit in that intersection not terribly long ago, within the last couple of weeks. Just all of those concerns and the fact that it does butt up to several homes. It's literally in the backyards of several of our neighbors. You know, while it ostensibly will only have hours until 10:00 PM, that doesn't mean there's not going to be things going on in the parking lot there that go on in the parking lot of the Speedway that exists right next door. And they aren't good things. I mean, people that park there and take advantage of substances and then bounce over to the urgent care to get Narcan or whatever and kind of rinse and repeat. We don't need to provide opportunities for that sort of activity to happen right in our backyard. I would, I would strongly urge the Board of Trustees to consider this and to decline. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews? Oh, you mean later on, yeah. So I will note that there will be a public hearing where you'll be able to make additional public comments regarding the Dollar General store, but certainly feel welcome to come up and continue to make them here at the public comments section.
I have Linda Bird from King, uh, Kingbird Lane.
Hi, I'm Linda Bird and I live at 4126 Kingbird Lane. The Dollar General, we would live about approximately two houses down from the Dollar General. My big concern is safety concern because there's a lot of traffic going through there. And like the gentleman just said, there was a boy, maybe nine or 10 years old, that was just hit in that intersection just a few weeks ago and was hurt and was taken to the hospital. There are, because we can see through our backyard, a lot of people that walk, jog, ride bikes, that go through there, and kids all the time are going up there to get snacks and treats and stuff. So it's like, they don't always pay attention to what their surroundings are because they've got friends with them or they may have headphones on. So that's a big concern. And then the other one is, when you come to that intersection, when you're coming from, I guess, Austin Landing, and you make a right turn on Byers, they've got that turn that goes, and we're making that left turn, you've got to watch sometimes because those cars have a tendency to make that right turn and just shoot right over into the left lane and go into the Speedway. And then right next to the Speedway, then you're going to have the Dollar General. So I've seen accidents happen there too, so it's something that, you know, it's a safety concern also. And the other thing is Dollar Generals have been known, you know, for their crime activity and things, and we have enough crime activity in our area. And they're mostly, they do not come from here in Miami Township, Miami'sburg, as you all know. They're coming from different areas and they're coming into our area, stealing cars, breaking into homes and stuff. And I think that that would just create more people because they're in the area. They're going to investigate the neighborhood there and it'll make the crime rate higher. Also, the, they're not the cleanest, cleanest store either, because when you go and you drive by, most of the Dollar General stores, they're not the cleanest. And nor are they in the inside either, and you can find a lot of shelves that are not filled. And I've talked to a few people that have been into the Dollar General markets, and they say the food is not worth buying because like the fruit and vegetables are not fresh. They're rotten, and then the meat is not very good either. So I don't think it would fit within our area because there's other areas that could use that store because we have all the grocery stores we need right there. And if you need bread and milk, you've got Speedway right there. And we've got Krogers, you've got Walmart, you've got Aldi's, and there's Krogers, three of them around. So I think that it would not be beneficial to Cranes Run. And if it is, and if they do build it, I think they would need to build like, instead of that fence, it would need like those concrete wall barriers that go down the highway to lower the levels of the noise because there's kids, lots of kids there on Kingbird and Oriole Court that would be right behind that. And, you know, I just think safe-wise that we don't need the Dollar General there.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, Kristen Messler from Oriole Court.
Yeah, I know, I'm tall. Hi, my name is Kristen Messler. I live at 10019 Oriole Court. My comments today are also in regard to the Dollar General Market. They will be placed next to Cranes Run. Several years ago, I bought a home in the Cranes Run neighborhood that I was proud of and I believed that I could grow into. I invested a great deal of money into the purchase of this property because it was important to me that I invest in a home that was in a very nice area and as crime-free as I could get. The decision to be in a well-maintained community has come with some higher property tax, higher property tax rates to the tune of $7,500 a year and an HOA fee, which I'm happy to pay because I work hard to maintain my property and I value that my neighbors also work hard to maintain their properties. Many in this community have chosen to live their lives here for the same reasons that I did. They want a nice community that is safe for their children and where they know their financial investments in real estate will appreciate over time. After looking at the plans for this project, I discovered that the Dollar General Market will be built directly next to the Cranes Run community. The side of the building will actually be right next to the backyard of some of our residents. After doing further research on Dollar General, I discovered that they have been sued multiple times in the last five years, most recently for overcharging at the register. So that doesn't exactly help with their advertised lower prices of their items. Customers noticed that items regularly rang up, rang up higher at the register than they were listed on the shelves. Dollar General was sued by the Attorney General in at least five different states, including Ohio, and this, in the last five years, and this doesn't show a positive trend for the store in our area. In December of last year, Dollar General also reportedly rolled back their self-checkout stations and increased their headcount in stores due to an increase in shoplifting. So that does not bode well for a community with families and children to have a store with such a track record of crime directly abutting the community. So I firmly believe that allowing this building to be built next to our community would be at cross purposes with the desires of my neighbors and I. I feel it will diminish the curb appeal of our homes and present more opportunity for crime to be brought into our own backyards. So after all of the time, money, and effort that we have invested and the care in which we have selected our homes in this neighborhood, I believe allowing this business to be built here would be unfair to our community. I urge you to please reconsider this project, or at the very least, the location of this project, to assist us in upholding a safe and well-maintained housing development for all of our families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dennis Vogel from Springwater Lane.
Hi, I'm Denny Vogel. Live at 96, 9652 Springwater Lane, just up right next to the three-way stop, which from 6:30 to 8:30, it's people going to work, some people stopping, some not. So we've got a problem there to begin with. But to get to the, to the real thing, where is the traffic light going to be when you open that big, big construction, a big buildings thing, neck on Austin Landing? Where's it, where's it located at?
Do we know what we're considering here? Are you, do you know what you're referring to as far as a building goes or an intersection? Do you?
The industrial development?
Pardon?
The industrial development by the airport, is that what you're?
No, the one, one off of Austin Landing, the big manufacturing plants going in.
Yeah, it's going to use the same light at Austin Landing, Austin Boulevard and Washington Church. They're not, I don't believe there's going to be an entrance off of Austin other than at that light.
At the, at the.
The existing light.
At the existing light, it'll be coming on. Well, if you have people going down Washington Church, that's a very narrow street, so I think you need to eventually do something to widen that because it's really a very, very outdated road. My next question is, back some time ago, on Lincolnshire, at the very end of it, I think you at one time suggested a road cut through there. Who owns the property just beyond Lincolnshire? That was going to be a proposed road at one time, and then the neighborhoods in that area shot it down. What, please?
It's, it's a privately owned property. I don't know the exact name of the owner, but it's a privately owned property.
You guys are all too young. Anyhow, I would suggest with all of the, all of the traffic, it's going to be coming off of that construction site, that you propose building, opening that up and taking that right straight on through to Spring Valley. I think it's doable. I think it was worked on one time and then it was shot down. I think it needs to be visited. That's all I got.
Okay, we'll take a look at it. Thanks. Do you have anyone else? Mr. Matthews?
No.
Yep. Is there anyone else here tonight who'd like to speak during the public comments portion of the meeting? All right, we'll move on to, we'll all close the public comments portion of the meeting, move to the consideration of votes of resolutions and motions. I motion to approve Resolution 68, 2024, a resolution to authorize the township administrator to execute a grant agreement. Can I get a second?
I have a second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
I motion to approve Resolution 69, 2024, a resolution to authorize the township administrator to execute a grant award agreement. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
I motion to approve Resolution 70, 2024, a resolution to authorize the execution and delivery of an application for financial assistance through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Nature Works Program. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
I motion to approve Resolution 71, 2024, a resolution to approve an amendment to the appropriation of funds for 2024. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
I motion to approve Resolution 72, 2024, a resolution to enter into a tolling agreement. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Tonight, we have a couple of public hearings. The first public hearing is zoning case 18386, Lyons Business Park. I move that we open the public hearing for zoning case 18386. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Zoning case number 18386 is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report. Applicant will give a presentation. All proponents will speak. All opponents will speak. A time limit of five minutes will be placed on each of the speakers. Please give your name and address for the record. The board will close the public hearing prior to taking final action. The board will now hear the report from the staff. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this hearing been met? And do you have a recommendation for the Miami Township Zoning Commission?
Yes, boardly requirements for the case have been met, and I do have a recommendation. First, I will review the case.
Okay.
The application for interview is a planned development regulation amendment to the Lyons Business Park development, located just east of our facility here, north on Lyons Road. The request is to modify the existing preliminary development plan and Their request is to modify the existing preliminary development plan and development standards for Lions Business Park. Again, here's the location of the property. Taking a look at the larger site, the general intention of Lions Business Park is light industrial office park, just sort of a very standard office, light industrial, no other uses really permitted, warehousing assembly, so on and so forth. Here's a view of the nineteen ninety-six approved site plan. At the time, the original proposal was for six buildings to be built, two and three connected, but largely against six buildings within the planned development. After an applicant went into building three, there was a need for additional parking. So building six was modified to instead be parking rather than a building, part of which, let me see if I can flash forward here, left a pretty significant amount of trees. There you go, you can see the parking lot, sort of the east center portion rather than a building. So a pretty significant amount of trees were preserved. The area in question tonight, shown with the star, is another area of the planned development that was originally shown as a preserved preserved tree stand within the site, sort of a mixture of stormwater, but again, just kind of open green space. Staff has been working with the applicant, who had prepared a couple of concept plans, sort of reimagining what that front corner of the property would look like. Here are two of those concept plans. Certainly additional details will be reviewed as part of a final development plan submittal, but generally working with the applicant, the discussion was centered around the quality of the area shown to be preserved as a tree stand. This was a tree survey that was done in twenty sixteen that showed several of the quality mature trees on site. Certainly, there were far fewer than what was originally believed at the time of the site plan approval preserving this as a tree stand. So again, looking at this site potentially as a developable site rather than just a tree stand as it's, there's not many trees when you go out there. Part of the zoning commission recommendation, which I'll get to again in a minute, did did sort of center around preserving what trees can be saved. There certainly are quality trees, especially around the sort of perimeter of the site. So anyway, those can be preserved and integrated, is certainly a win for maintaining the aesthetics, but also just having good vegetation on site. So again, here's the the view of that preserved tree stand. It was shown sort of as just a amorphous blob. A lot of that was sort of scrub and you know, sort of junk tree, but once you get in there, they're fewer than initially imagined. But talking with the applicant, there the, as far as the the code goes, there are two benefits of saving some of these trees, so we'll certainly work with them to do that should the plan be approved. But the zoning commission did recommend modifying the planned development in a five to zero vote with several stipulations. One, a current tree survey must be provided at the time of a final development plan submittal. Two, a site plan must be prepared that includes a map of tree preservation zones. That's a specific definition in our code for any tree to remain. And then finally, existing mature trees must be incorporated into site design. So again, quick view of some of the concept plans, but again, would be maintain continued uses within the remainder of the development, office, light industrial type uses. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to discuss.
The board will now hear from the applicant.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and consideration. My name is John Snow. I'm the Vice President of Mark Forn's Realty. I handle, we handle the management for Miami Partners Limited, who is the owner of this property. This two-acre parcel, we feel, is a very prominent spot. I think you all could see exactly where it was. It has good frontage to I six seventy-five as well as Lions Road. We, we're developers ourself and we drive around and we've not, I've not seen a development that's this type of a development that does not have, that has this many trees existing already within the the site. So we've had several folks that have been interested in potentially developing the site. We may develop the site ourselves. There's a very large need for our product. We own about two million square feet and manage about two million square feet in the flex office type of environment. And we're about ninety-nine percent leased up in that, so there's a, there's a huge need for this product. We obviously would come back through on the final development plan regardless. We are also more than willing, obviously, we'll try to preserve any of the mature trees that are there now. In fact, just in driving over here, there's even a couple more that maybe have passed away, have died. We'll also incorporate into the landscape plan the Miami Township standards of replanning and reforestation with regard to any of the trees that are, that are need to be removed or that ultimately die due to the development. So when this was developed back in nineteen ninety-six, the site, Mark Forns, who's here with me, was instrumental and helped in the development of the of the site. And we did create an easement already for access to this site in the hopeful eventuality that this would be a developable, a developable site. I can see, you know, Thorson, Swandala, the law office, I could see like a law office that could go there. We could also see, you know, a ten or fifteen thousand dollar flex building that has, you know, ample parking. And we feel that the comprehensive plan that is under the Miami Township guise is is pro economic development and we would appreciate, you know, the ability to hopefully develop the site, sell the site, or develop the site under the PD five designation that is, that is currently there within that that area. There's no residential areas within, I don't think, five or six hundred feet of there, so I don't think there'll be an issue there. I don't think there'll be any more traffic that would come out of there. There's probably gonna have thirty to forty parking spots there. So we'll do everything we can and we're developers ourself, so we really understand the process. So we appreciate your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. Any questions? So no questions from me, but thanks for a great presentation.
Okay, thank you.
The board will now hear from all proponents. Any proponents may come up and speak. The board will now hear from all opponents. Any opponents may come up and speak. I motion to close the public hearing for zoning case one eighty-three eighty-six.
A second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve Resolution sixty-six, twenty-twenty-four, a resolution to adopt a planned development regulation amendment to Alliance Business Park Plan Development under zoning case one eighty-three eighty-six. Therefore, be it resolved. The Miami Township Board of Trustees approves the planned development regulation amendment under zoning case one eighty-three eighty-six PDRA and upholds the zoning commission recommendation.
A second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
I move that we table the public hearing. I move that we table the public hearing for zoning case four, ten, twelve until a meeting of the full Board of Trustees can be scheduled. Can I get a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
So for those in attendance tonight, what just happened is because John Morris, trustee Morris, is not in attendance tonight, we're tabling the Dollar General Marketplace zoning hearing until a later date. So it'll be, it'll take place at a future date. Department head comments. Police Chief Steckelmeier.
I have none, thank you.
Public Works Director John Schweickert.
Yes, board, just real quick, I just wanted to thank Community Development and their staff and my staff in the Parks Department. What you saw tonight was a couple of resolutions for grant agreements or or at grant applications. Just shows the community that we're working hard behind the scenes. We, we hear your voices. We understand the improvements that that want to be made in the parks and the roads and the services provided. And and this just goes to show you that we are adamantly working behind the scenes to provide that benefit to our, to our residents and community. So thank you.
Thank you. Community Development Director Alex Carlson.
Just quickly to sort of piggyback off Director Schweickert's comments there. It's been great having the Parks and Trails Plan adopted. It's been a great tool for us to take out for grant funding and and try to find these sources of dollars. And with that, we we did get an announcement from Montgomery County through the CBPG program that we were awarded fifty thousand dollars toward Eighth Street Park Improvements in Chautauqua. So we're very excited about that. We'll be bringing back updates on the acceptance of that grant and then sort of the integration of those dollars into the park. But again, another opportunity that funds have been presented, so the Parks and Trails Plan's been a great tool. Thank the board for review and approval of that.
Administrator Chris Snyder, or Finance Director Clay McCord, sorry, Clay.
Nothing for tonight, thank you.
Administrator Chris Snyder.
Again, I'd just thank our staff for all their efforts and again, bringing in additional funding into the township and allowing us to pursue some of our long-term goals with upgrading our facilities in both the parks and and road departments.
elected officials comments, Mr. Matthews?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Posey?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the staff. When it sounds like we're passing these resolutions, it sounds like a lot of technicality and it is, but it's a lot of hard work behind the scenes for which they're going out there and actively seeking funds to to make the community match what the goals have been stated in in our parks plan or on our engagement with the community on their goals and wishes, doing so without new taxes or new and going out to seek new opportunities for funds. So it may sound boring, but it's a lot of work on their end to improve the community in ways that aren't additional burdens to our citizens. I'd also like to thank everybody that came out today to speak. We are hearing you on the Dollar General issue. Zoning is complicated. I'm a lawyer and I don't always get it myself. I'd encourage you to take a look at our zoning code and what standards are being applied in these circumstances. I love feedback from township residents. It's very important for me to understand what's going on. And unfortunately, we don't hear from a lot of you until something is directly impacting you. And I don't say that as a criticism, it's just a function of daily life. This is a time out of your day and I know that sitting here for forty minutes in which most of it was not about the topic that you came here today and we announced that we'd be tabling it, maybe it doesn't feel good, but it's appreciated that you're here. And I encourage you to keep coming forward and letting us know what your interests are and what what's important to you.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. I also appreciate everyone who attended tonight and their views on whatever issue they were here to speak about tonight. We have two work sessions tonight and we will not be taking any further action following the work session. So I now motion to enter into a work session to discuss Hartzell Avenue and anti-icing operations. And if you don't want to stay to hear about those those topics, you're free to go.
A second.
Mr. Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
We will send out a notice on that. We don't know when it will be scheduled for, but I would certainly check our website and and the Community Development Department will
So what I would say is that when we do have the zoning hearing for Dollar General Marketplace, that you should bring that topic up during the public comment section of the, well, as you heard tonight, when we went through the zoning hearing for the other property, there's a, there's a period for opponents to speak and that's the correct moment in the meeting to that's fine. I know, that's fine. I could have oh, you forgot about that topic, yeah. So right, right. I would write down your topics.
You wanna plug in?
I do know what you're saying. I would write down those topics and bring them with you. Everyone will have plenty of time, I'm sure, to discuss their issue, their issue with it. I'd also encourage you to, I think you said you'd heard about Dollar General Marketplaces, but maybe you hadn't been to one? Okay. Well, there's nothing like a first Right. Actually, so I have visited one in my life, only one, and that was the Dollar General Marketplace a few weeks ago. So I I just, the reason I suggest if you have a time and you're able to find one and go see it yourself, it it means a lot more when you have a firsthand, you know, hey, I was there, I saw it, here's why I saw, kind of position to take. All right, thanks. Have a good night. Oh, you're fine.
All right, do I need to, are we ready to go, right?
I think we're ready to go.
Okay, I'll let you have it. You lost all your audience. What did you do?
What did I do?
You cleared the map.
I guess they didn't want to hear some good information about anti-icing.
Are you gonna start with the anti-icing of the Hartzell?
We're gonna start with Hartzell, I'm gonna clarify that. We're gonna start with a situation that we have in the township, Hartzell Avenue. Real quick before I dive into it, I just wanted to kind of give you a perspective of where the location is. On that northwest quadrant, you can see the multiple baseball diamonds. That is along Farmersville, West Carrollton Road. You can see the trailer park there. I can't think of the name off it, but basically this quadrant is on Soldier's Home, Miami'sburg, Springboro Road. And as I zoom in a little bit, give me a second. The topic of this discussion is, what you can see on the website, is a road that is called Hartzell Avenue. And in nineteen forty-seven, under this subdivision development, Hartzell Avenue was included in the Hartzell subdivision as as an identified road for the township. Now, to, the long story short here is, we can go back and forth on the actual acceptance of the road and whether that plays into the ORC language post nineteen fifty-one. In short, Montgomery County has also identified this as a road and there is existing trees in this road, unimproved right-of-way slash road. The homeowner to the north sent the township a certified letter identifying the hazards of trees in this road. We have reached out and discussed a great deal with our law director and Montgomery County and I have a recommendation for the board that we obtained two quotes to remove the trees. One, from one company, it was forty-nine hundred dollars to clear them down to make that area safe. The other was twelve thousand dollars. My recommendation, based on our discussion with Community Development and our law director, the best pursuit for the township would be to remove the trees or at least cut them down to make make they, make them safe and then turn this road into an unmaintained status. That could be future development behind in that field. I'm gonna ask Alex to kind of chime in here in just a second. The other option, if if we didn't want to go with that recommendation, is we could fight the obligation, whether that this is actually our road, we ever accepted it. But based on our law director's suggestion, that could be a very timely and costly endeavor between the township and the residents of Montgomery County. So Alex, if you could just chime in, I know this is a very So Alex, if you could just chime in, I know this is a very quick overview of the situation, but Alex, if you could feel free to...
Yeah, yeah, just quickly. So nineteen forty-seven, this was a, a pre-nineteen fifty-two plat acceptance, so at the time, there was really no requirement to get the permission of a township to create roads as a county. It's now was, they call it paper street. I mean, it's basically written on a plan, there's no road there. If you didn't look into it, you would have no clue. I mean, certainly these two property owners mow and maintain this basically as, as if it's a side yard. But this road was created with, at the time, the idea that the, the large farm field to the east of this picture would be developed, and it would give it a secondary access point rather than just Farmersville, West Carrollton Road. So as John mentioned, you know, clearing this tree would remove the hazard per the higher revised code, and then moving it to an unmaintained status would sort of give us the best of both worlds. It's not functionally a road per state statute, but it would remain public right-of-way in case there were ever some development that, that occurred here. We would have that, and we would not have to go back and reacquire right-of-way. But in the meantime, talking with these property owners, it would be mowed just like somebody's tree lawn in front of your sidewalk. It would be continued to be maintained by property owners. Again, however, we would not have to go, per the higher revised code, go drag the road twice a year. And that's functionally what we have to do for a grass road is to go drag it twice a year. I haven't even heard exactly a clear definition of what dragging a road means for multiple people. They're sort of different, but generally moving it to unmaintained status would alleviate that requirement, functionally.
Not that the property owners want to accept the donation of the property?
It would, it could be a route. If we wanted to vacate the right-of-way entirely, we could discuss that. We have to get it surveyed, platted, and...
It's already been platted once.
It, it's an option, I think. And there's, it's, it's sort of an up-and-a-air issue. I mean, the only reason it ever even came up is because there's these, you know, a couple of dead trees that the property owner went to say, you know, hey, I'm concerned about these trees. It appears to be in the public right-of-way rather than public property or their private property.
Yeah, so am I. So I, I mean, if it's a question of the property, I just don't know how, how much we care about the right-of-way. You'd have to tell me what that field looks like and whether or not we think anything's ever gonna come of it or if it'll stay.
It's hard to tell. I mean, certainly there's, there's some issue out there today with water and sewer availability as far as any denser development, but...
I mean, I'm not opposed to disposing of the land if that's the route we want to go. How many trees are we talking about?
Uh, there are seven elm trees and one they consider a dead snag, but a dead tree. So eight total dead trees, or trees that are dying or in that, that realm. So one, one completely dead and seven that are about a hundred foot tall that are also dying. And I get from my road foreman, he said that these are Chinese elms, so they grow and manipulate and they kill within themselves. I'm not a tree expert, I'm not an arborist. I leave that up to my staff and just try and take care of things. But that's, that's a very cost-affordable route is if we just went ahead and took care of them, make them safe instead of them falling on someone's property.
Okay, and you'll bring this back to us the next meeting or something?
I, I was looking for a recommendation or suggestion, 'cause we, we have ninety days from the certified letter to respond to the...
Well, as far as the tree removal goes, I mean, that can just be done within budget. I mean, the Public Works Department could just do that, but then as far as actually choosing to vacate or go non-maintained, we'll let you know what the exact timing is, but we'll put a response to it with the county.
Well, if we take out five thousand dollars with the trees, I'm assuming we're selling them for five thousand dollars. So here is my actual concern, is that if they've mowed it for sixty, seventy years, the one that sent us a letter saying take down these trees, the other one could be claiming eminent domain, or eminent domain, adverse possession, and that it completed twenty years ago, and that if we go in and take down the trees, thanks for helping out, but I own this property. I'd rather get a resolution to where we don't have this as a concern at all, and, and I think what I hear you saying is taking down the trees and declaring it unmaintained may do that, but there is, I would be, if we're gonna do that, I would be asking for affidavits from both property owners that they make no claim to that property prior to us doing it. Or if they want to go in half, we'll pay twenty-five hundred dollars towards removing the trees, they pay twenty-five hundred dollars, and we'll give it to them for that purchase price, something along those lines. It needs to be worked a little more is what I'm getting at. I think we can certainly look at options based on the direction that the board does not necessarily want to retain the property. Something can be worked out to do that, so...
Okay, that's, that's helpful, and that gives us an avenue to coordinate best practice.
Is there a chance somebody might want to develop the land to the, to the east at some point and are not able to because there's no access from that side?
It'd be difficult because there's no public water and sewer there, so...
Oh.
That's not to say that it wouldn't ever be extended, but it would most likely be extended from West Carrollton.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
And it's currently agriculturally zoned, so, I mean, unless we're involved in an annexation, we're in control of the zoning process and how it gets access, and again, probably would be a large lot agriculture today that would have probably well-inseptic, at least current direction, but it's hard exactly to say.
I may kind of consider it there's, I don't know, why do you have to...
It was, it was done in forty-seven as a recommendation of the county and sat there until now, so certainly...
Yeah, let's figure out the property situation.
Makes sense.
So the second part of this work session, earlier we passed a resolution on a grant agreement award for the H two O High Rivers Chloride Reduction Grant. Previously, we had a homemade system that we put into one of our basic one-ton trucks. This new system that we applied for fits in a little bit bigger of a vehicle. The question that I have, or what I'm asking in this work session is, we had identified a yard waste program previously when we went to the American Rescue Plan funding. Since then, we've ran into some complications based on the site development that we had and, and some other unforeseen issues with floodplains. I have since found out in my endeavor that there are grants out there for communities that do try and have a yard waste program or any sort of processing plan. With that said, I no longer want to reserve those funds to buy such an apparatus and in turn find other identifiers as the timeframe is coming up, whether it's back into parks, roads, or any other department that could utilize those A R P funds. With that said, on this application, I've also been looking at all of our capital replacement, all of our capital equipment, and seeing if I can find ways to use equipment more efficiently. Not just having a piece of equipment that has one sole purpose, but what can we use throughout the whole year? What I am presenting tonight is, I found a use to replace an aged piece of capital equipment that is a, it is a truck that had our previous system on it. This new L A S system that we were awarded in the grant, you could see is a bigger unit. It has a sixteen-hundred-and-thirty-five gallon tank, fits solidly in a truck. Now, the problem with using our existing fleet is that there would be a jockeying of position by having to constantly remove this in and out while trying to get ready for snow events. So what we've identified is a medium-based truck, not just a five-fifty, not a big one, but it's a Freightliner M two, it's a mid-level package. One of the things that we can do on this is be able to quickly move this in and out to do other programs, but this piece of equipment can not only just do the chloride reduction, the anti-icing or de-icing, but it can also do dust control, weed control out in the parks, and it has other various tasks for this piece of equipment. What I would like to present to the board is purchasing a Freightliner M two through the, through the D A S program for this specific application in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, four hun, or, I'm sorry, it'd be ninety-four thousand, eight fifty-eight, and that'll be the replacement capital item for this project. The outfit, I will write into my twenty-twenty-five budget per the grant agreement. We have to have this completed and start processing the data for this application by September of next year, which we can definitely do. I'm not opposed to putting it on a piece of equipment, I just say there's some difficulties with in-between storms, taking it in and out and getting everything situated, so... Based on our current service that we do, we put this system in a truck and dedicate it for the winter season, and then we move it out, but we, we could do other things There is a reel system, so there, there's a reel system with either a hundred and hundred, a hundred-and-fifty-foot hose, so we could still reel out and do the spray control off of it. So in the summer, summer months, we could quickly, since we're not, we don't have inclement weather that we're up against on a timeline, we can put this in a truck, go out and do weed control, we can go out and water if we have, if we do a plant program in one of the parks, now we have the capability to water it quickly, put it in the truck, water, come back, use it for other uses too.
Can you use the same tank for brine and weed control and...
Yeah, there's a clean-out process.
Okay.
Yeah. So I just wanted to present that to you tonight in place of what we have allotted for a tub grinder through a yard waste program.
So it's just the active block that we're looking at?
Uh, no, this is, the system that we're looking at is in the back of the truck. If you give me just a second, I can pull up an image of what that truck would look like.
I guess I'm wondering if there's a plow on the truck?
There, there will not be a plow on this truck. So this, this is the, we're trying to have a multi-use vehicle instead of having an isolated unit. You could see that this has drop sides, so we can use it for, you know, if we want to set pallets in the back and do asphalt with it, we can pull stuff out, put this back in, go do whatever task it's needed. This would be a year-round truck, not serving as a snow plow.
John, can you explain for the board what the grant award would actually pay for that thirty thousand that we got for the brine?
Yeah, it would, it would pay for this application unit that you see in the back of this truck.
Okay.
Let me zoom in just a, a little bit. So you have, you have a hose reel, you have lane control spreaders, uh, spray nozzles, so if you're out on buyers, you could do two lanes at once. If you're going and doing Munger Hill, you could either do one isolated lane, depending on traffic, or if not advised, you could straddle the middle and do both lanes. So there's different, there's definite, different techniques with using the anti-icing system like here. The, the biggest thing is through the E P A, and I hate to admit this, but we don't have a way to really precisely gauge how much we put down unless we're saying we use the whole tank on what we have right now. This would give us precise application. We come back, it lifts the data right into our system that we already have, 'cause all of our trucks are through force, so we have force systems on there, so... If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer this information.
Do you need a plow on this truck?
I do not...
Do you need to have a plow or...
We could put a plow on here, but I don't deem it necessary. We have enough small trucks and support trucks that we, we're fine as is. The current replacement, the current truck that this would be replacing does not have a plow either, but it is utilized for leaf collection as well. So we would utilize this for leaf collection as well, too.
Okay, so you want the low, okay, well, just because, I mean, you want the low sides on, well, you, or, do, what do you mean, so, going to the leaf, leaf collection or what?
That, this truck would also do leaf collection as well. What we've identified is typically we don't do, our bed units sit on top of the rails. This specific truck, given that it's a little bit longer than our standard F, F-series trucks, we would have something that slides in as well. So again, we're trying to come up with ways and techniques that we can be more versatile and adapt quicker to the different needs and services that we provide to the community. So we'd be able to just slide things in and out a lot quicker.
So the, the whole tank would actually come out?
Yes, the whole tank, as you see right here, is on a, a railed system that does bolt to the tailgate latches and clamps down the front. Probably ten to fifteen minutes, it's unhooked, it's out of the truck, ba, based on this style that we're going for. If we were gonna put it in a plow truck, we'd have to pull it out, put the bed, the bed pins and everything back in, it'd be a little bit more of a complex system.
No, very thoughtful presentation as usual.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
That's all we have for tonight.